Is there anybody that would like to discuss that item? Item number four will go on consent. Item number five is another right-of-way vacation for two parcels in the Central Quarter Light Rail Transit Project. Is there anybody who would like to discuss item number five? Item number five will go on consent. Item number six, the MICA House, 3045 Fifth Avenue Southeast. South, sorry about that. Is there anybody who'd like to discuss that item? Item number six will go on to consent agenda. Item number seven is 2701 Bloomington Avenue South. There are three variances and a site plan review. Is there anybody who'd like to speak to item number seven? We will discuss item number seven. Item number eight is Harriet Avenue Apartments, 2903, 2905, 2907, 2911, Harriet Avenue South, and 2904, 2910, 2912, Grand Avenue South. That item has been withdrawn. Item number nine, 38th Street Mixed Juice, 2707 East 38th Street, 3800 through 3812, 28th Avenue South. There are two rezonings, a series of variances, and site plan review. That item has been continued. And then item number 10 is Westminster Presbyterian Church, 1221 Niclet Mall, 1226 Marquette Avenue, and 1200 Marquette Avenue. Is there anybody that would like to discuss item number 10? Not seeing anyone. We'll put item number 10 on to consent. And then the last item, item number 11, is a zoning code text amendment. Would anybody like to speak to item number 11? All right, not seeing anybody for item number 11. We'll put that on to consent. So, the proposed agenda for this evening on consent will be items three, four, five, six, 10, and 11. We will discuss items one, two, and seven. Item nine will be continued to June 27, 2016, and item number eight will be withdrawn. So can I have a motion to approve the agenda? Any discussions? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Next item is the Committee of the Whole Consent Agenda. We had three items that we heard at the last Committee of the Whole meeting on May 26. The first was a location and design review for the 2017 through 2021 CIP projects. Item number two was a series of land sales, 301 30th Avenue North, 1218 Urban Avenue North, 1911 Oliver Avenue North, 1927 Queen Avenue North, 2026 Sheridan Avenue North, and 3125 Bloomington Avenue South. And item number three was a land sale at 2018 Upton Avenue North, Green Homes North Project. Would somebody like to make a motion to approve those items as consistent with Minneapolis Plan? Any discussions? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Item is approved. So with that, we will first act on items for the public hearing tonight. We'll take a vote on items to be withdrawn, and then we'll take a vote on items to be continued, and then we'll act on the consent agenda items. Items to be withdrawn are items as identified, number eight. So can I have a motion to withdraw item number eight? Are there any discussions? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Abstentions? So item is, item number eight is withdrawn. Items to be continued include items number nine to the June 27, 2016, next regular meeting. Can I have a motion to approve? Any discussions? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. So items on the consent agenda, as identified, are items three, four, five, six, 10, and 11. So what we're going to do is open the public hearing for those items. Is there anybody who would like to speak to any of the items? Again, items three, four, five, six, 10, and 11. Any discussions? Please, come on up. State your name and address, and which item would you like to talk to?
Greetings. Mr. Chair, there are no staff reports on these?
There will be no staff reports on these consent agenda items.
Okay.
Unless you actually had a specific question regarding one of the items?
No need. So my name is Eric Amel, for the record, A-M-E-L. Residence is 1 Seymour Avenue Southeast in the Prospect Park neighborhood of Minneapolis.
Sorry, real quick. So did you want to speak to one of the consent agenda items?
Oh, I apologize, I'm out of turn if we're doing consent.
We are still doing consent, sorry. So three, four, five, six, 10, or 11?
Well, I want to address items three and four.
So you want to speak to both?
Right. I want to address to the vacations of 23rd and Fourth Streets Southeast. Do we have the wrong numbers?
Nope. We are going to discuss items one and two. Nope, no problem.
Okay, I'll stand down. I'll be back.
All right. Anybody want to speak to any of those items? Again, those are items three, four, five, six, 10, and 11. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. So can I have a motion to find, to approve staff recommendations for those items? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Any abstentions? So items three, four, five, six, 10, 11 have been approved. All right, now we will open the public hearing for the items on the agenda for this evening. Number one, right? Oh, that's right. Sorry about that. We will now open the public hearing for those. We're going to start with item number one, right-of-way vacation for 23rd Avenue Southeast, between University Avenue Southeast and Fourth Street Southeast. And we'll start with a staff report before we open the public hearing.
So this is a right-of-way vacation that the University of Minnesota has applied for. It's for the portion of 23rd Avenue Southeast, lying between University and Fourth Street. It's the area that's highlighted in red. It's directly west of the Metro Green Line LRT station in Stadium Village. The university is proposing to vacate this portion of roadway. They would use it for access to their facilities north of here. But they would like to have it vacated so it comes under their control. Public Works is working with the University of Minnesota right now on a transportation study, an area-wide transportation study. And for that process to conclude, Public Works has recommended denial of the vacation. They would like to further study the usage of these two streets. This one and the next vacation application that I'll show you. This is the study area and focus areas. There are three focus areas in this vacation. Both this item and item number two, the vacations fall within the focus area. And so until that process concludes, Public Works is recommending denial of the vacation. And I know, I believe that the U of M is here to speak to that, but I can stand for any questions.
Are there any questions for staff? Commissioner Bender?
What is the timeline for Public Works process?
The timeline for this study is July of 16 through January of 17.
Any other questions? Commissioner Rockwell, sorry.
The university is here to speak, or no? But my question is maybe for you, maybe for the university, which is just, I'd like to gain a better understanding of why, if the street is going to be, continue to be used as a street, why it would, why they're seeking vacation.
I think that would be best answered by the applicant.
Any other questions for staff? Thank you for your report. So now we can open the public hearing for this item. I guess we'd like the applicant to come up first and state your name and address.
Thank you. My name is Sandy Cullen. I'm the Assistant Director for Parking and Transportation Services for the University of Minnesota. My address is 511 Washington Avenue, Minneapolis. I forget the zip code. So, thanks for your consideration of our vacation requests today, and for staff recommendation for approval of a number of our requests, items three and four. Just wanted personally to address the 23rd Avenue vacation request and maybe clarify a couple of things. So specifically, the map in your packet, which is page three of three, the red portion is really only the westerly portion of the road. The University of Minnesota already owns the easterly portion of the road and the adjacent sidewalk that is adjacent to the LRT station. So the purpose of this request, the university already maintains this road and adjacent area as if it were our own street. We own the street all the way up to Sixth Street. And if I may show you a jurisdictional map of the streets of the area. So this map shows that 23rd Avenue, north of University Avenue, the west, the easterly portion up to Fourth Street is owned by the university, and everything north of Fourth Street is owned by the university. The university built this street as part of the TCF Bank Stadium construction. So we already own the rest of the road and the road network that connects this street north of University Avenue. So this is kind of a remnant parcel that didn't get settled when we built the stadium. So what we're trying to do with this little parcel is to settle the parcel and get it, get it attached to everything else. And we already operate the street as if it was our own street. So maybe that answers your question. So if there's any other questions, maybe I can clarify anything? If anybody has any other questions?
Thank you very much. Commissioner, keep here.
Yeah, could you just explain what the different colors on the jurisdictional map?
Oh, sure, sorry. The pink, kind of supposed to be maroon, is University of Minnesota. And the gold, the yellow, is city streets. The blue is Hennepin County roads. And then the freeway is green.
Okay, and then, and then, just for practical reasons, why would the university want to own more streets?
Well, again, so we don't want to own more streets. But again, since this little piece is contiguous to street, most of the street that we already own, we just thought it makes sense to clean it up because we're already maintaining it as if it was already our own street. And it provides circulation to all of our property.
Any other questions?
Any other questions?
Is there a particular downside to it being run by, owned by the city? It sounds like it's working fine.
This piece?
Yeah.
Well, it's just, it's just disjointed, and it's kind of, you know, when there's permitting, there is a permitting downside for any permitting entity. Oh, I'm going to all have to get a permit from the city and the university if I'm going to go run up the street? It just makes it, makes more sense for somebody who's coming in. Oh, that, this whole thing is the university's street.
Any other questions for the applicant? Commissioner Crowder?
What is the university's long-range plan for this street?
To be stay a street.
Stay a street?
Yes. It provides access to the stadium and the parking lot, and the stadium, any buildings that might future take over of our surface parking lot.
Commissioner Sweets?
Yeah, is there a particular hardship to waiting till Public Works is done with their study in January?
So with relations to that study, I can put that study map. So this is a cooperative study, and essentially it's being paid for by the University of Minnesota. And the purpose of this study is to continue along the City of Minneapolis Granary Road Study that was done a while back for the parcels up in, I forget, Semin district it used to be called. So that whole area and how it affects our transitway, because our transitway runs through that whole district. So we're trying to better understand what that development is doing in that area and how, and how that development north of the transitway is being accessed. We're trying to protect the integrity of the transitway and not have any more crossings of the transitway. So, and then how our medical development is happening along Fulton Street. So this, that transportation study is not really going to address the jurisdictional issues of 23rd of this little parcel on 23rd. You know, so we didn't feel that it was a difference between whether that study is completed or not at this time. Again, we were trying to make it a contiguous parcel.
Commissioner Magrino?
Yeah, in your application here, it says that you wanted to, or the university wanted to expand the roadway with added space for boulevards and sidewalks. Is that, so?
I don't know why it said expand, yeah. I mean, that might have been a, I don't know. I think that was a mistake, sorry. We want to maintain the roadway. We don't want to expand it, it's big enough already. We might shrink it depending on how traffic, our future traffic to the stadium exists. If something happens with the parking lot, something, different development is accessed differently, it might become, you know, we have three lanes of approach coming southbound from the north right now. So do we need all those three lanes? We might even go down to two lanes, but that's something in the future. We don't have any current plans to change that roadway at all.
Do you know what's sort of in the medium-term future of that office building that's right there on the corner? Is the university looking to develop that?
For the office building that is in the west of this road?
Yeah, to the west or south of the stadium. Is that part of why?
I know the long-term is a potential to remove that office building and replace it with other development, because, so then the whole stadium site would be nice and visual to the stadium. That's the long-term plan, to make that a green space and part of the stadium, and not have that building in the way of the front door of the stadium. That's the long-term plan. But nothing short-term is on our CIP at all in our next six-year plan for that building.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions for the applicant? All right, seeing none, we can continue the public hearing. Thank you very much for your comments. We'll continue the public hearing with anybody else that would like to speak. Just please come up to the microphone, state your name and address.
Hello again. My name is Eric Amel, A-M-E-L, resident at 1 Seymour Avenue Southeast in the Prospect Park neighborhood. I've put on a graphic of the area showing a piece of Prospect Park relative to the site. I'll point that out in a second, and the University of Minnesota. I'm also the Secretary for the Prospect Park Association Board of Directors. And the, I think it's safe to say that our neighborhood would endorse the time to do the study, to do this right. The reason that we don't have a public comment registered in the staff report is because very little practical, if none, reasonable notice was served to our neighborhood. It would seem to be at least, the very least, a courtesy of the University of Minnesota to wrap the neighborhood into this process in the sense that this street is in the middle of our, or in our neighborhood. And we should be at the table for this, and would enjoy the time to do that with the applicant. To say that it is basically a street with limited public use, except for that of the university, I would, I would suggest is a specious argument. It is a street, and it introduces the notion to me that if it was vacated, that I think that, I would believe that the university would have, and it's, even if it, if they're saying that they would logically maintain it as a street, that they would have the, the right to develop it any way they would without any understanding with the broader community at large. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Commissioners, any questions for this speaker? Commissioner Magrino? Oh, sorry. Seeing none, is there anybody else? Thank you. Is there anybody that would like to speak to this? State your name and address, please, thank you.
Hi, my name's Jeff Barnhart. I office at 2800 University Avenue Southeast, and I live in Roseville. I'm here, some of you may know me. I'm usually on the opposing side, and people are criticizing what I'm doing, so this is refreshing. As you know, or if you don't know, we own several linear square feet along Fourth Street, between 29th and Malcolm. We also own or control about 20, 25 acres now in the study area, including property north of the transitway. And you guys probably have heard of Green Fourth Street. It wasn't my idea, but I've been participating in fully. And there's financial asks, there's maintenance asks, and just a lot of ongoing stuff. But the pitch always had been for us that we're going to have a five-block view corridor from Malcolm Avenue down to the stadium. And as we talk about a pedestrian-friendly street and something that's supposed to be very homogeneous all the way through, I'm just concerned. I really don't care about the 23rd east-to-west road. I'm just concerned why Fourth Street would be vacated when we're in the middle of this parking study, and that I might be looking at the back of a development, I would say a super block, with no assurances that the U of M has basically partnered with a private developer. And it's kind of, it's kind of funny, because I want to see the stadium, and the U of M created that, and it's beautiful. And I just think that the assumptions moving forward with Green Fourth change in my mind. If somehow we have a four-block street now instead of five, that's looking at something that I'm not sure what it's going to be in the future. So I would just request that you guys consider waiting until the traffic study is done. And that's my piece, so thanks.
Thank you for your comments. Commissioners, any questions for this speaker? Seeing none, is there anybody else that would like to speak on this item? All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing for this item. Commissioners, there is one item regarding the right-of-way vacation for 23rd Avenue Southeast. Does somebody have a motion, or somebody like to start a discussion? Commissioner Lipke here.
Yeah, I'd like to move staff recommendation for item number one, the vacation of a portion of 23rd Avenue, only because I don't see the harm in waiting until the Public Works study is done. And, and I just think that it would actually be unwise to proceed without that. I didn't see a compelling reason to move forward without it being completed first. So I, I don't feel any reason justifies over, over ruling the staff recommendation on this item.
Motion has been seconded. Any other discussion items? Seeing none, clerk, please call roll.
Bender?
Aye.
Kegden?
Aye.
Crowder?
Aye.
Lipke here?
Aye.
Magrino?
Aye.
Rockwell?
Aye.
Sweets?
Aye.
It's eight zero.
Great, thank you. That completes actions for item number one. Item number two is a right-of-way vacation for Fourth Street Southeast, lying northwesterly of 25th Avenue Southeast. Staff is Hillary DeBorick.
The street that you just acted on is in this location. So this is the Fourth Street segment that the, that the university is proposing to vacate. In this case, there is privately-owned parcels of land, the hotel and then the restaurant, that do have, that do use this street for access. The University of Minnesota does own this parking lot, and also this parking lot. While there is access to the hotel from 25th Avenue, they do have access into their parking lot from Fourth Street. And as the previous speaker talked about, the city is involved in Green Fourth, which we, you discussed as part of the Rise of Prospect Park project. I think that was the first project where we discussed it as the commission, and that is still in the process of being modified, the street. So for those reasons, and then for the same reasons in the last application, we are recommending denial of this vacation as well.
Great, thank you. Are there any questions for staff? Seeing no questions, we can open the public hearing for item number two. Again, if the applicant was willing to come up and speak on item number two as well, please state your name and address.
Thank you. I am Sandy Cullen, Transfer Two, Assistant Director for Transportation Services at the University of Minnesota. So just want to bring back this other map that shows Fourth Street. So in working with the Metropolitan Council and the City of Minneapolis in the design of the light rail transit corridor, this Fourth Street used to go through all the way to 23rd. And with the train being built in this location, it caused Fourth Street to become a dead end. So in the coordination with the city during that whole process, we were, we had talked to the city, and we had submitted a vacation request at the beginning of that request because we knew it was going to be a dead-end street. And serving the area, and we had worked with the adjacent developments to provide access through an easement for that, those areas. So since that LRT was completed, it was the understanding that's, that's when we were going to submit our vacation requests for this street because it no longer went through. And we are in a development opportunity with the neighboring parcels to develop this whole parcel. So the idea that the future that this pedestrian corridor, as Jeff had talked about, would be perpetuated all the way to the stadium as part of that project. And that's why we're here at the council asking for the vacation request at this time. So I just wanted to provide that additional information and visual for you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions for the applicant? Seeing none, we'll invite anybody else that would like to speak on this item. Sure, please state your name and address.
Kelly Brandt, University of Minnesota Real Estate Office. And I just wanted to make a couple of comments. First of all, the Fourth Street and the 23rd Avenue street vacations were first applied for in 2006. It is now 2016, we were told, and frequently reminded that until CCLRT project was completed that these vacation requests would not be put forth. So we reapplied again, and I think Sandy Cullen has stated both for 23rd Avenue and Fourth Street, which dead ends. You know, we would like to certainly cooperate with the transportation-traffic study, but we do not believe it's going to yield any different conclusions than what we put forth here today. So I want to thank you for your consideration of our street vacation requests, and ones you have approved, and certainly would answer any questions you might have.
Great, thank you for your comments. Are there any questions for this speaker?
Sir, I have a question for you. Do you have a sense on what your timing is for this proposed development of these sites?
I think with 23rd Avenue, we've stated that there is nothing planned there, and it would continue as a road. If you look at, and I think you've looked at, just a small portion of it would continue indefinitely the way it's planned. Fourth Street, street vacation is unknown at this time as to what the plan would be. Again, it'd be dead-ended. We maintain that property. And, you know, quite frankly, I don't know why the city would want to retain any type of ownership in, in areas where, you know, no longer maintains it and creates any. in, in areas where, you know, no longer maintains it and creates any...